I'd like to call the meeting to order of the Menifee City Council. Would you have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. I'll note Councilmember August, Councilmember Leesmeyer, and Mayor Pro Tem Denver.
Here.
And you are chairing the meeting tonight, sir.
Words of inspiration from Pastor Jim Edwards, Revival Christian Fellowship?
Thank you, Lord. We thank you for your wonderful grace, for your mercies today. Lord, we thank you that you are a faithful God and that we can come before you with our petitions, our cares, our needs, and really believe and trust that you care and that you answer prayer. So, Lord, with that, we lift up this evening to you. We pray for this meeting tonight with the community here. Lord, we thank you for a wonderful city and community that we can grow together in. Lord, thank you for the opportunities of growth that are so prevalent right now, Lord. And we certainly know that with the growth, there is great responsibility and a lot of decisions to be made. And so, we would ask for your wisdom tonight, Lord. We pray for each and every council member and faculty, Lord. We thank you for their diligence to help serve our community. Lord, we pray there'd be a unity of your spirit here tonight. We pray that people would come with good intentions, Lord, no selfish ambitions, but things, Lord, that would be beneficial to the whole of the community. So, we thank you for your presence here. We pray that your will be done in all of the petitions and needs. And thank you for answering prayer. We ask in Jesus' name.
Thank you, Pastor. Councilman Leesmeyer, would you join me or would you please run the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. Please join me in leading our nation's flag. Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, unalienable, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own. Thank you.
Do we have any agenda approval modifications on the agenda?
Your Honor, we would ask one. The folks here tonight to be appointed to the Youth Committee are here. Quite a lot of them are asking if we can move those up to just before item 11.1, so we have them introduced and then they can leave before your very exciting hearing on CDBG.
Understood. Thank you very much. Are there any presentations?
No, sir, not this evening.
Any public comments?
Yes, sir. Would you like me to call them now?
Please.
I just want to say hello to the City Council and everything and all the members of the financing and planning and Public Works and everything like that. My name is Tom Powers. I own Giovanni's Restaurant down here in Menifee. I haven't been here for a while, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, as you can see. Anyway, there's just a couple of points I wanted to bring up. I want to congratulate the city and the county on finally getting something going with the overpass over the freeway. It's coming along nicely. There was one thing I noticed that was done, and that was when they widened the road on the eastbound before the 250. They widened that. They took that 18-foot chunk of planter out, or safety zone, that was concrete. They took that out and added an extra lane to relieve traffic from the other three lanes. That's fantastic. Now, they took the concrete out coming this way on the other side between Antelope. They took it out and they painted a safety zone in there. My recommendation is that they add a lane coming this way, coming west, to relieve some of the traffic in the mornings. Just add a lane there. So, they've got enough for nine more cars on the other side to go onto the freeway. It wouldn't be expensive, a little bit of paint, and a $300 sign that says, "Do not enter into the other way," if you understand what I mean. If you don't, I can draw a picture of it for you later. My next point is in regards to the flags out front. I don't think we're that poor where we can't replace the American flag that looks worse than Old Glory did. Okay? And the California flag's looking pretty decrepit, and the POW's flag is starting to look pretty bad. I think we can probably afford that as a city. And we take a little bit more pride in our flags. The other thing is a subject that I brought up about five years ago in regards to the Marietta and the Bradley roads going through the Salt Creek. We just had a rain and they had to close it. It wouldn't be that expensive to fix it. Drop a couple K-rails down there to make the culverts. Get the Army engineers to come out, pour concrete over the top of that thing, and we'd have our roads fixed. Because when it rains really bad, and we're expecting big rains this year, nobody in Sun City can get to this side of the Salt Creek without using the freeway. And that's going to make it a lot worse over there. Thank you.
We're not allowed to speak because it's not on the agenda. Trust me, with the bridge, that's handled. It just isn't done yet. I'm not sure why. And the second thing, your other idea of the, if you'd get together with one of the city counts, with the city people here and talk your ideas exactly out.
Sure.
Then all that'll be worked out, too. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, John.
Any other public comments?
Yes, sir. Jacqueline Haas?
Yeah, I'm Jacqueline Haas, and I come here with good intentions, and I ask for your help. I am the president of the Riverside-Sun City Homeowners Association, who are a community that's comprised of 250 single-family homes located at Marietta Road and Rouse. We had several meetings with Jonathan Smith regarding having things done around our community. And one of those things was street repair. So, anyway, in result of those meetings, in our March-April newsletter, we put down that the street repair would start this month, and it has not started. I ask your help in having somebody call me or get together with me to let me know when this is going to happen. We had a board meeting this morning and came up about the streets. And I was informed that three calls had been made to City Hall, to, I don't know, Public Works, and those calls were not returned. I just ask for your assistance so that I can communicate with the members of my community. Because I have informed them that this would be done in September. And I'm a woman of my word, and I'm sure you're the same. Thank you.
No, Jonathan's not a woman of his word, I promise you. If you would get to Jonathan, not right this second, and get him your phone number if he doesn't have it, and he will call you, okay?
Is that guaranteed?
There. She will give you, she will make sure you get a call.
We worked hard, haven't we, Jonathan? And he was sick during part of the time.
All right. Any other public comments?
Yes, sir.
I don't have any, but...
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Rico Ca. Did I do it right? Ca, sorry.
My name is Rico Ca. Hello, councilmembers. My regards is to the north end of Menifee, which is being ignored. I've talked here to Jonathan Smith. There's roads that are flooded, as we talk to you right now. Nothing's being done. It's been going on for the last five years. And I just want to know why the city hasn't done anything. I keep getting from Bob Cartwright that there's no money in the budget, you know, to fix these roads, to fix these drains. Yeah, we have heavy rains coming, and to this day, all the streets are out there are Lake Mead. So, I'm just asking the city to, you know, quit wasting their money on bridges. You know, fix your roads, fix your city. When's the last time, Mr. Mayor, you went to Romaland and walked around and talked to the people? I have never met you until coming to these meetings. The only person I've met was Jonathan Smith, who's actually came out, shook my hand, and talked to me about the north end of Menifee, used to be called Romaland. So, all I'm asking is you guys to, you know, take a walk with me. Look at your city. It's a good city. But the south end here is beautiful, but the north end needs help. Thank you.
Write down my phone number, six, whatever it is, 672-1731. You and I'll have breakfast and we'll talk. Public comments?
First of all, I want to agree with Mr. Powers, because that's where I do a lot of my campaigning, is on Newport and Antelope at 7:00 to 9:30 in the morning. Road rage is horrible going westbound. It's just horrible. And that was a great idea to put in another turning lane in that open space because you could dedicate that just to the freeway. And so, people, when they turn in there, that would open up. And there's eight or nine cars that back up and block the intersection. So, that would be a great thing to amp up and do. And I'm going to apologize for the next topic, which is why I'm here, because I saw it on the future agenda. I was at a fundraiser a couple of weeks ago, and one of the residents came to me and said, you know, "I've got family in Sun City, and they have a hard time getting around, driving around." And so, they said that most of the doctors have moved from Sun City over to Hope Center over here. So, it makes them very difficult to get from that area over here. The bus system doesn't go by there. So, I did a little research, and this is a big map, but it shows all of the RTA throughout Riverside, basically, Corona, Temecula, Moreno Valley. Almost every city goes by the hospital and goes by a medical center and City Hall. But there's no bus line. You can use the Dial-A-Ride, but if it's more than a three-quarter of a mile from a pickup, like at Cherry and Bradley, it doesn't go. So, there's nothing that goes to the hospital on McCall. So, I think this may be in the works, and I apologize if it's already done that. But a lot of people have come to me and said, "If we can help out and put an extra line within three-quarters of a mile," which can be easily done here at Hawn and Newport. So, have them go on over to the medical center. That would help out a great deal. I've passed out a map. There's 19 pickups at Cherry Hill and Bradley that come over this way. And there's 20 that go back. So, there's one every hour, which would accommodate doctors' appointments in that area. So, if you're already working on that project, great, but I just wanted to give you my input. Thank you.
Let's talk about that when you get bored. Yeah, it is Mr. August.
Mr. Winter, you are making a presence of yourself at these meetings. Anyway, I am the RT rep for the city, and I'm not new. I've been there for a while. And I know that most of their routes depend on pickups. But I would like to remind you, in case you're not aware, that they have a service called Dial-A-Ride.
Dial-A-Ride, yes.
And that would probably, for people, to be much more effective. I believe it's $1.25. I don't know what the rates for the seniors would be. But that's an alternative.
It's two and three bucks, but it's only three-quarters of a mile from falling.
And I would disagree that it's two or three bucks, but we can bet a beer on that if you'd like.
You're on.
Okay.
I'm already indebted to you already now.
Of course, we don't have a place to go anymore, so...
Well, hold on, hold on. Giovanni's, Giovanni's.
All right, we can do that. But anyway, you can get together with me. Tell me what, be a little more precise in what you're really asking for. And certainly, I'll take it to RTA, but it's going to be based on trips per day.
Right.
But I will be sure to tell them that Mr. Winter's counted 19 trips per day. But I wouldn't...
Well, what I handed out shows you the number of pickups and going and coming. And it's two miles from the Bradley Cherry Hills to the hospital. And the Dial-A-Ride is only good for three-quarters of a mile.
This really isn't on the agenda, but we'll get, there's a history we need to tell you about, too.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, and Dial-A-Ride...
You've got to know, I'm a novice at this. I'm just doing what people ask me to do, so...
Yeah, Dial-A-Ride has a new program, and they will, it's, in my opinion, it's three-quarters of a mile from the roots. But they have expanded that for seniors with disabilities. So, get with me, and we can talk about it.
I guess I should get with you every time, huh?
Yes, you should.
Public comments?
Those are all the public comments, Your Honor?
Thank you. Councilmember updates and comments? Anybody? Approval of the minutes that are in the agenda? Do I have a motion? I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second. Motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose no. Consent calendar. There were pulling, say, how's that go? No, we're going to talk about the consent calendar. Do I have a motion on the consent calendar?
Second.
I have a motion. I have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none?
That'll be a roll call vote. Thank you, Your Honor. Councilmember August, Councilmember Leesmeyer, and Mayor Pro Tem Denver.
Aye.
Thank you.
Public hearing items. We're going to conduct a public hearing, adoption of resolution.
Mr. Denver?
Yes.
Can we go ahead and have that item 12.1 Yak?
I apologize. Thank you very much. 12.1. 12.1 is the appoint of the 11 new members to the Youth Advisory Committee for the fiscal year 2015-2016 term, the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. I'm going to turn this over to Robert Lennox, your Community Services Director. He will discuss a little bit about what the Yak is, what it does, and present your new panel of members to you tonight. Robert?
Thank you, City Manager Johnson. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and councilmembers. It's my pleasure to present to you this evening the second class of the Youth Advisory Committee for the city of Menifee, pending your approval and appointment this evening. Again, as the city manager was mentioning, a little background. Last year was the first year of this committee, and we saw some great rewards through the appointment. You had passed a resolution to create the committee. And as a result, the first class achieved some great accomplishments in the first year, helping out with multiple special events, contributing to our Parks Master Plan process, and also taking on some long-term projects that are going to be continued into the current year with this class of representatives. So, without getting too much further into what they're planning, because a lot of that is driven by them during their first couple of meetings, I want to just introduce them to you. So, I want to invite them all to come up to the side, just to the right of the podium. And instead of me just introducing them, I want them to come to the mic and say who they are, what school they attend, and what grade they're in, so that you can put a face to a name. So, committee members, if you can come up to the front, off to the side, the right side of the podium there, in a line, and we'll go one by one. All right, come on up. Don't be shy.
Hello, my name is Christopher Gunter. I go to San Rosa Academy. The school just right off Hawn Road, and I'm a senior.
Hello, my name is Elgin Datcher, and I'm a junior, and I go to Heritage High School.
Hello, I'm River Arcato. I go to Paloma Valley High School, and I'm a senior.
Hello, I am Teresa Austin. I am currently a freshman at UCR.
Really?
Hi, my name is Abby Hose, and I am a junior at San Rosa Academy.
Hi, my name is Carla Monroy. I am currently a senior at Heritage High School.
Hi there. I'm Angelica Austin. I am right now a freshman at MSJC.
Very good.
Hello, I'm Tavita Dusan. I'm a senior at Heritage High School.
Hello, my name is Shane Damiano, and I'm a junior at San Rosa Academy.
Hi, I'm Gerardo Gonzalez. I'm a junior at Cal Cito Marcos.
Really?
Thank you all.
This is an amazing group of youth, young adults, I'll call them, actually. As you can see, a great cross-section and mix from our community. And we are missing one this evening who's home ill, and we're glad that he did not bless us with his presence so that he can get over that and then join the group. His name is Kyle Mixx, and he's a 10th grader at Heritage High School. And so, this group is going to be tackling a number of projects and events for this year, as well as learning a little bit about the civic process and city government in the city of Menifee. So, they don't get off that easy. I want to invite them back up to get a quick photo op if the council will join them in front of the dais, please. And I guess two quick housekeeping items. The first is, I think we'll need to codify this with a motion and a second.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I second the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Do we do a vote?
Yes, sir. Just a voice vote is fine if you all approve.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carries.
Thank you, Robert. Very much.
Sharon, for those parents and students that are still here, please meet Jason in the lobby so he can coordinate the very first meeting. Thank you.
All right. With your permission, we'll still do 11.1, conduct a public hearing and adopt resolution number 15463 for a community project block grant.
Yes, sir. That is the time.
And that's the city council, city manager. Will assign someone to talk to us?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, we do have a staff report this evening. I'll turn the balance of the item over to Community Services Director Robert Lennox, who will share with you the Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report for our CDBG campaign of last year.
Thank you, City Manager. This report is typical and routine on an annual basis. And as an entitlement agency, our responsibility is to bring to this council a report of the preceding year's activities for everything incorporated in the CDBG program for that year. So, I'm going to actually call up our resident expert, our management analyst, Margarita Cornejo, to present the balance of the item.
Good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tem, councilmembers, and members of the audience. I have a brief PowerPoint on the Comprehensive Annual Performance and Evaluation Performance Report, CAPER. It's just a really long title to say this is your year-end report, basically of what was accomplished in this last year. And this is the third year that the city completed participating in the CDBG program as an entitlement community, before it was participating through the county of Riverside. And in this last year, we were really able to focus on the capital projects, primarily the senior center renovations that you guys saw happening over the last months in the interior and exterior. That was a big focus of this year, as well as some ramps projects. So, with that said, for 2014-2015, the total allocation for that year in particular was $438,375, and we ended up spending $477,000. The reason the amount is more than what was allocated is because we had carryover funds from prior years to do that. But following that is a summary of where that money went. So, it's about $75,000 for planning and administration and fair housing services. There's another $62,368 that were spent for the senior center rehabilitation Phase One interior improvement projects. There was another $224,000 that was spent for the exterior improvements project. There was ADA accessibility ramps project completed by Public Works in Sun City. And then, there was $58,000 for public services, which was a number of nonprofit organizations that got funded. And then, $21,000 for the minor home rehabilitation grant program. So, to give you a visual of what CDBG accomplished, there was an ADA accessibility ramps project. This was done on Port Mac Drive in Sun City area. This is an income-eligible target area. And through the collaboration between Public Works and Community Services, the project focused on putting about six ADA ramps along this residential street. There was also the Case Nissero Senior Center Rehabilitation Phase One project, which focused on addressing all the existing ADA issues within the senior center, as well as adding some technology updates. There's a stage curtain that's been there, as well as a projector, and some new lights that kind of enhance that multipurpose room that is heavily used, not only during weekdays, but weekends as well. And then, to complement that, there was the Case Nissero Senior Center Rehabilitation Phase Two project, which ultimately also ended up really heavily focused on addressing the ADA deficiencies that were on that site, as well as kind of enhancing and beautifying the site itself by removing the failing perimeter wall, adding some security fencing, and again, addressing a lot of the ADA improvements. We also had our senior minor home rehabilitation grant program that provides assistance to income-eligible seniors. And then, our public services, which was $60,000, and it funded at least six different organizations in a wide diverse range of programs, everything from youth services to senior services. And just to illustrate what the public services alone accomplished, it was able to serve, I believe, almost 2,000, over 2,000 low-moderate-income people in everything, again, from youth services to senior services. So, tonight's recommended action is that the council conduct a public hearing and consider adoption of a resolution approving the Comprehensive Annual Performance and Evaluation Report for program year 2014-15, and then authorize staff to submit the CAPER to HUD. If you guys have any questions at this time, might be happy to answer.
Any questions of council? If not, then we'll bring it, City Manager?
Mr. Pro Tem, members of council, I just want to take a moment to applaud Robert Lennox, Margarita Cornejo, and Alan Yun, that I think they've done a phenomenal job, not only on just the program itself, but really taking the essence of what community block grant funding is and putting it to proper use. We have certain facilities that are in desperate need of upgrading. They saw what that was. They applied the funds the right way. They got it expended appropriately, worked through a majority of difficulties with not only contractors, but just the layout of the landscape of the senior center alone. If you were to look at that facility last year and look at it this year, it's a completely different look to the facility. It's much open. It's much cleaner. It's much more attractive. And I think it's more inviting for our residents. And I just wanted to applaud and thank them for that.
Any other questions of the city council of staff? If not, by the way, I misplaced my paper you gave me, so we will do this best we can. The, so we'll bring it back behind the, excuse me?
I can just take that mirror.
Yeah, go ahead.
Perfect. So, at this time, if there's any questions of council, otherwise, if there are not, you can open the public hearing, and I'll note the time.
We will open the hearing now.
All righty. I'll note the time is 7:30 PM for the hearing. And I have, I can confirm for you, Your Honor, that this was published legally. And the only correspondence received, there was actually no correspondence, but Ms. Cornejo did bring some paperwork for you that's in your red folder, although it is simply more paperwork than you probably wanted. It is completing the entire packet. So, that is the only thing that came in. And at this time, then, you can call for public testimony.
Is there any public testimony on this issue? Hearing none. We'll...
Close the hearing at 7:32 PM. And then, council may discuss and move forward to a motion.
Any discussion? Yes, sir. Mr. Leesmeyer?
Just briefly, I just wanted to say again, thank you to Alan, Margarita, and Robert for all your efforts out there. Good job. Thank you. That's all of that.
We all agree. Is there any other discussion?
All right. Then, we would ask that we would have a motion to adopt resolution number 15463 approving the 2014-15 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, the CAPER, for the 2014-15 Annual Election Plan, authorizing staff to submit the CAPER to the Department of Housing and Urban Development.
I need a motion.
So moved.
Do I need, I need a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
And I'll do a roll call on that. Thank you, Councilmember August. Councilmember Leesmeyer.
Aye.
And Mayor Pro Tem Denver.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. We've done our public hearing. Any discussion item, or no, city attorney report?
No report this evening, Mayor Pro Tem.
City Manager report?
Thank you, sir. Just a report... Just a report out that we will be at ICSC San Diego tomorrow. That is basically a one-and-a-half-day event where we talk to some retail and commercial partners and try to get them to come to the city of Menifee. We'll have four staff down there, and then I'll be returning Friday.
Good luck. We're all counting on you.
Future agenda requests from city council members? Hearing none? I would like to have the audience notice that I don't think we've really talked about this before, that up on the wall here, underneath around our logo, it says, "In God We Trust." So, what I'd like to do is to, at closing this meeting, I'd like to say, "God bless the United States of America, and God bless Menifee." Meetings adjourned.